Welcome, today is Tuesday, November 12th. This is the regular meeting of the Board of Education, Rhonadec Central School District. And I have a motion to approve the minutes of October 22nd, regular meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, discussions, all those in favor? That motion passes. An opportunity for a public comment. Seeing none, we're going to move to reports and discussions. And we have a Smart School Bond project and technology integration planning update.
Well, I think you have a full agenda that I saw today. And I kind of agree, but I do want to give you an update on a couple of things that we're doing with technology. One is our Canvas integration strategy. And I think you have updated your packet there, but I'm just going to briefly touch up a few things, just to give you a kind of status of where we're at as far as Canvas integration in our prebuildings. At the elementary building, we really don't use Canvas there at this point in time. It tends to be more of a secondary software program. However, we are interested in expanding out to elementary, at least the fifth grade level, to instruct the students, how to familiarize the students with a learning management software that does Canvas, so that they remain through the middle schools, they will have a decent orientation of that product and be able to use that with them. Because of the ground running, so it begins at the end of the eighth grade. At the middle school, the faculty there adopted Canvas voluntarily, and most teachers use it in grades six through eight. It's a multi-level platform, and it can be used at various levels of sophistication. You can use it at a very rudimentary level, or you can do a really deep dive into the product and put everything into that product that you want. So it's a tiered software system, and you can use it at any one of those tiers. So some teachers, again, use it extensively, and others use it for basic classroom functions. At the high school, some staff have used it in some departments, and it's spotty there, and we look to expand there, and that's an area of concentration going forward this year for that. The strategy is multi-pronged, and one of the areas that we look to do, and I mentioned we're looking to introduce it at the fifth grade level, and so that the students that are in sixth grade will have a reasonable orientation to it. At the middle school, we're looking at people who may not have adopted it fully, or want to go do a deeper dive into that, and we're looking at using the technology integrator to do that. Teachers can sign up for assistance at that point, learn a little bit more about the product, and use it as they see fit at that point in time. Also, at the high school, we have, we were looking at departments, and we have, actually we had a meeting today concerning that, and we're looking at targeting the math department. And seeing, because there are already several teachers there who have adopted it and are using it. We like to go into an apartment and build a community of professionals that work together, using, you know, teaching the same topic and hopefully expand out into the other departments across the high school. Also, the tech integrator would be used also explicitly for new teachers coming in. As we hire new teachers, there'd be training available to them, and I gave you an example in that packet of where it's appropriate, where it's not appropriate to do that, especially in the area of special ed. I think the example I used was there are some teachers who are push-ins, teachers, so they don't necessarily have a curriculum per se, they are assisting students already in a classroom, not necessarily appropriate for them, but however, there are other teachers that we've hired that it would be absolutely appropriate for them to use that. So again, there's a signup sheet online that the teachers can sign up and use that, and we'll also be meeting with each of the department heads at high school, I believe, the December meeting, if I'm mistaken, and talking to them about that particular strategy doing that. So that's how we're going to be using our tech integrator at this point. We have pulled some of the time that normally was spent at the elementary school. I know we usually have had a point four over there, but now we've relaxed. I don't know what the percentage will be, but let's say it ends up being a point two at the elementary and then a point two at the secondary level. So we have to pull back, we only have a point four, and we're using our resources as best we can to meet the goal that the board has set out before us. Other initiatives to enhance the use of Canvas, we're looking at our summer curriculum monies and using that as an area of focus that as teachers apply to, for summer curriculum work, that Canvas would be one of those areas which would be given a higher priority, and being able to reward teachers the monies in order to do the work that needs to be done. One of the things that came out of the training that we did at Canvas last spring, I believe it was, was that simply we just need more time. The teachers learn the product, they understand the product to a certain degree, but there's a big lift in getting all the information into it, all the curriculum, the lesson plans, the objectives, evaluation, all those things. That just simply takes time. It doesn't take instruction, but it simply takes time. So that's what we're looking at, our summer curriculum project monies, and being one of the focus areas that we would look at for this summer. We also look to possibly conduct a six-hour training, as we did in the past, to introduce the media product interest to faculty, and also seeking some grant monies to possibly facilitate that. We also are looking at monies that may be available this year. One of the things I've been talking with Marvin about is what monies might be available currently between now and the end of June, because there are some teachers who've expressed an interest in Canvas and in integrating technology into their curriculum between now and the end of June, and not just maybe some other things. So we're firming up the numbers on that, so we at least know where we're at, to be able to offer that to the teachers as well, to enter the data needed in the Canvas product. And so since the numbers are not finished, we're just waiting to those firm up a little bit more, people were able to do that. And then also, on February 14th, is our superintendent's conference day, it's again dedicated to technology. It'll be an area of focus, Canvas integration, and we'll be offering training to teachers at that point in time as well. We're also looking at a, there are teachers who have expressed an interest in going deeper with Canvas than the normal introductory coursework that we've offered so far. So I contacted Canvas, it's not a cheap endeavor. They bring, they will bring in a trainer to the high school, or the middle school, secondary level, but it comes to like $5,000 a day. And that's the cost of the training, and that's not unusual in this day and age, but so we will be looking at that, but again, whether we can pursue that or not, that's still an option that we're exploring. But I'm just giving you an idea of the costs that are associated with that level of training. Also, and this may be a topic for the personnel committee, but we're looking at the mentoring model. The district currently has a mentoring model for new teachers, and what I'm suggesting would be, we look at a mentoring model and using that same type of model for Canvas integration. In other words, this type will be offered to a master teacher to teach other teachers this particular product. There's a lot more discussion that has to be done on that, but again, it's a personnel issue, obviously involves contractual considerations and all of those things, but we're again looking at that as a possibility. So these are the focus areas that we're looking at for this year. I know that it's a multi-year goal that you have, and so we're taking a step into that area, and I think we'll be able to make some gains with it, with this product. So I don't know if there's any questions, but that's the, that's what we're looking at doing this between now and June for this product.
Any questions?
I've got several. Thanks, Steve, for presenting this. Is there, before the project was started, given that it's a multi-year goal, is there a percentage of teachers at what level now, so we know that we've made progress throughout the year? Like, do you have a sense of where teachers are percentage-wise in the three schools? Well, obviously not CLS, but middle school, high school, who's doing the minimum, who's doing the next level, and who's doing that deeper dive that you talked about?
Right. I'll stop ahead, I don't have that, but I certainly can provide that to you probably next week, because it wouldn't be a hard piece of data to collect and be able to give to. At least, and I know what you're asking for, you're asking for a baseline, so we can see between now and June progress anyway. So yes, I can provide that for you.
And then this question on kind of the signup sheet, are these teachers that just have never been exposed to it before, or reluctant to start the process? I'm just wondering if such a passive strategy is going to be effective?
Well, we thought in the first year, and we may think this differently from spring, but we thought we would go for the low-hanging fruit, so it's the least resistant people, because the more that you have ground swell, the people who want it, the easier for the slow adopters to come into that hole. And it would also give us experience as to those barriers and hurdles that we would experience, going, oh, we didn't do that well, we need to improve that the next time around. So that would be better place to teach those teachers who might be reluctant to adopt the product.
And then my last question is on parent training. I haven't, I didn't see anything in your report on how parents are going to be brought up to speed with what they can expect.
Yeah, I talked to Canvas about that, because this is a very difficult thing. I said, look, we're a small shop, you know, we don't have a lot of, you know, support to be able to do that. The one thing that Canvas offers, and I need to put it on the website, is a series of videos that Canvas offers that will provide training for the student, so rather, or for the parents. And so rather than creating that from the ground up, we'd be able to do that. There may be a few videos that we might want to do just to make them Rhinex specific, but they do have them there, and rather than going through their site and seeing it, I'd rather just short-link it from our site to that video and be able to do it that way. The problem that we've had, and we've had two instances this year, I think, where there were difficulties, and it ended up being problems at home. You know, malware on the device, or, you know, dates that needed to be done, and things like that. But those questions, we try to answer as best we can, and, you know, sometimes one of the tip-offs is, well, it works well when I'm at work, but it doesn't work well when I'm at home. Well, if it works well, it works well. The problem is at home, or wherever it happens to be. So we do have some of that. We actually had the incidents two years ago with Google that way as well. It ended up being a virus on the home computer that was actually changing passwords. And once that was realized, the problem would arrive. You know, but we wrestled with that for several weeks with one or two particular students, and it was very tough to nail that down. So, but for the most part, I think Canvas has got that covered, and so I'm going to set up a set of links for them to do that.
Steve, so those parent links, when do you think you could have those up?
Probably next week, as well, even this week. Yep. Yeah, there are a couple of them that were still under development, so I want to make sure that those are completed.
And then I assume they'll send something home, so people know that it's there, they can play?
Yeah, yeah, we can set some level of the packet and, I don't know.
And can you tell me, so how is it going with the technology integrator? Like, are people signing up?
Yeah, we've had some things, what we're, the technology integrator, at the elementary primarily, and it has changed in recent, probably the last couple of weeks, but we're set up doing nap stuff, and that's just a standard thing that technology integrators have done for years. And so they were tied up with some things that were already calendared in the schedule. So that's being done. The other thing that we're also working on, and I'll just speak to the elementary, is we're holding off towards the second half of the year at the fifth grade level, because again, it's just an introductory approach that we're looking at doing there, each in the fall, they might forget it, or it's not used consistently, we want the teachers to grow into it. So if we start in the spring this year with the fifth graders, then they'll roll into the sixth grade, you know, with the impression that, like, you know, when there's a summer, there's only some laws of, you know, attitude that we don't, that won't be okay. But also, we want to ease the teachers into it as well in that regard. At the secondary level, you know, the integration, as far as teachers signing up, I mean, again, it's all a volunteer basis, you know, right now, but we want to be able to encourage particularly those who are new to this path, we're being more aggressive with them, and saying, who wants to get adopted? This looks like what we want to go with going forward. That is your question?
Yes. Anybody else? Thank you for being here.
All right. Just one other thing. Smart School Bond, I just wanted you to know that we're really, overall, I don't know whether you want to keep up the numbers here at all, but basically, we're in much better shape than what we originally planned. When I came to the board several years ago, I said I needed $140,000 to complete four projects. A long story short, there's a long story to this, even what I wrote to you, but basically, we have done what we thought was going to cost us $139,000 for $63,000. So some of that was paid out of the general fund. We got a very favorable bid on fiber, which is due to be done by the end of January, that's what they're targeting now. There was some poll remediation that had to be done out there. Again, if you have two hours, one night, you're bored, I can give you the story of how we got to where we are today, but I don't think you necessarily want to do that. But basically, we're in very good shape. We have about $194,000 left of the $277,000 that we originally started with. The intent of the committee at that time was to spend the remaining money on presentation technology in the classrooms. We know we have aging smart boards, aging projectors, projectors that are going dim. We call it the starry night, it goes starry night, it's pixelated on the screen. So some of our projectors are very old, and they do need to be replaced. And we also wanted to set aside $20,000 for safety, high-tech safety. And so we're waiting to hear back from the safety, the various safety committees on what they want to use that $20,000 for. What I'm hoping we can do is bundle that all up in one package and say, here's what we're going to spend, $20,000 on this product on the safety side, the remainder of it goes to presentation technology across our classrooms, and close out our technology bond, our Smart Schools Bond monies, which we, you know, we started out with $277,000. And that was forwarded, imagine, that was originally back in 2014, a hundred percent back. So, and people have been, I mean, we're not alone in being sold and spending this money. It's been a slow process all the way around. Usually the whole up is good at Albany, you wait for months at a time for various approvals and things like that. I'm hoping, and I knew that ours, the dark fiber, was a complicated one, because it involved Public Service Commission, it involved two utility companies, it involved regulations, and it was a very complicated project to push through, and so that slowed things down. This is primarily, phase two, would be basically an equipment purchase. And that's just, you know, we're just fine, you know, with just many widgets, whatever they might be, and that's all we're doing. So it's just as straightforward, you know, the equipment purchase, and I'm hoping that the process will go a lot further for that. So we're well-positioned anyways to, I think we can almost do every classroom in the district with the remaining monies. So that's what we're hoping for. So we've got a favorable bid on the presentation, and they'd be the interactors we've been testing out in several classrooms, the Dell interactive screen. So far, the faculty that have used it, that like it, have gotten nothing but positive reviews on that, and so it's a good product going forward. It's not a proprietary product like Smart School, the, or anything like that. I'm not disparaging them, but it was meant for general use, and it has interactive annotations and a bunch of other integrators to do. And they would be mounted over walls, and it hasn't always been a change of Sheldon's existence, it's been, we want something that, well, this wall, and another period, everyone wants to do all these rolling holes and walls. This way, if I get a TV mount that's rated for 200 pounds on the wall that we've decided that's the best wall to be on, even as the technology changes, I can use the same mount, because they're all, it's all standardized, so we're not moving that around. So, you know, there's standard TV mounts, all the standard TV mounts, and those are universal standards that we'd be able to take advantage of. So that truly is a good challenge for Smart School. Any questions up there?
Sorry. What's the process for the equipment purchase? Do we lay out the funds and then get reimbursed from Albany? And does that happen in one school budget cycle, or?
It can happen over several. We can split that up, how it paid for it to be done over several budget cycles, but our reimbursement would be, you know, it took us three years to spend that, that's what we do. You know, some people will do it that way.
And these, we would look to buy these, not lease?
Pardon?
We would look to buy this equipment, not lease it?
Yeah, I hadn't really thought too much about leasing, because the Smart Schools is a one-shot deal. So after three years or four years, then you've got to come up with money out of your general fund, so that's why we're looking more along for it.
I'm not even sure if you'd be allowed to, through the Smart School bonds. I don't know, we can check into it. I'm not sure, I mean, they were looking for purchasing, not, not, which had a great ongoing cost.
Anybody else?
All right, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Okay, now we have a presentation from our EMS faculty on Madagascar Day.
Well, I'll just do a quick introduction. Thank you very much for the opportunity to highlight one of the special programs that we do at the middle school. As I've shared out with you, each year, this program has grown, we're very proud of it. But, you know, fortunately for me, I have a group of faculty members who have really kind of taken this under their wing, see the educational value in the program itself. It was an opportunity, and it came to us probably 2009, 2010, when Dr. Patricia Wright approached the district and had an offer for us, and wanted to partner with a school district in this area to, you know, to provide some opportunities, to increase global awareness in our kids, and to develop a connection between Rhonadec and Rhonelafana, Madagascar. It was something that we thought about for quite some time, we could never really get our feet underneath us and figure out how we were going to, you know, take advantage of this wonderful opportunity. Fortunately, I had a faculty member who was very much interested in going forward with this, Henry Frischkennett, and he found some equally enthusiastic faculty members at each grade level, sixth grade, Justin Waisenbaum, seventh grade, Jennifer Remo, and in eighth grade, Kristen Koval. And as I've reported out to you, but they could probably do much better, it's really morphed into a fantastic opportunity over the years for our kids. As I shared with you at our last board meeting, our hope was to have made this presentation at that board meeting, and then invited you to join us during our Madagascar activities on October 25th, and I know that many of you were at a board conference or workshop at that time you weren't able to. But I'm very proud to, I think they've elected a spokesperson, and Mr. Frischkennett is going to be their spokesperson, but I am very proud to introduce him and to introduce them, and have a fantastic program going on. Thanks.
So it's perfect that Perry's actually, because Perry was with us the first year, because Perry also helped us originally, like, bring us, so.
Just pick up the phones, I think.
So I actually wanted to take this opportunity to congratulate you, Joe, too, on your retirement. I know it's probably a bitter sweet for you, but you've been here a long time, and I personally, I'm sure everybody else would appreciate the service that you've given the district. I wanted to talk today, and John asked me to come talk about Madagascar Day, which is something that's been really deeply personal for me for a long time. We started it, like John said, about 10 years ago. Patricia Wright, who I always called like the buzz Aldrin of anthropologists, she's like this person that's just really exciting to talk to, and people that are in anthropology feel really know her. She came with Susan Fendell, who's a resident, and thought, you know, we should be able to connect Madagascar somehow with the district. And that sounds really awesome, and it is pretty awesome, but it took a lot of work to get there. So the first few years, I can find here, and a bunch of articles that I save over the years about Madagascar Day. The first few years, we had like some fundraisers where the kids, like, leave bags and things like that for, to raise funds for Madagascar. We actually sold some bags, and some bags we made, we sent over to Madagascar, and the students, there were like little notes in them, that was very exciting. Patricia Wright actually came and spoke a few times to one of the middle school students, which is also awesome. And then like seven or eight years ago, we had this group called Zara Aina, which is a bunch of Broadway actors and actresses that also had this connection to Madagascar, and they came up and wanted to kind of partner with us. And so that was really, I think, the turning point for Madagascar Day. We said, here's something really tangible that we can kind of latch on to. Kids really like performance, they like art, and so we kind of dove in headfirst with that. So in order to get this kind of off the ground, I personally feel that we need buy-in from our staff members, from the students, and from our community members. So I went around to all of our staff members and talked to everybody about, like, what can we do? Like, would you be up to giving up a half day of your instruction for this list of things that I think maybe we could do? And some people were really excited about it, and some people were kind of not so excited, just said, okay, we'll try to figure that out. And this is our sixth year doing it, so clearly nobody's ever told me we need to stop this immediately. So people bought into it. And it wasn't only staff members, it wasn't only my friends that bought into it. Community members, we have, we work with the Band of our Caravan, we work with MJOs, with Culture Connect, we work with Two by Two Zoo, I have a next year, I love this whole thing, but I'm just talking, so if that's okay. The preschools, well, the preschools we go into, the Baptist home, which I won't get on as a sort of subject this year, we work with all these groups, which is really awesome, because we get our kids out there and we get to meet with these really incredible and dynamic human beings, which is really awesome. And beyond that, we've had people from Madagascar come to Madagascar Day, which is really awesome. And this year, we had a nun, Sister Marjorie, from Zambia, come, and she is a teacher of, at an albino school in Zambia, and she came, she visited, and I took her around with Janie Boat and Frank Mulhern, who some of you may or may not know. And that was really awesome, because she got to see, you know, like, some of the Madagasque dance, and the art, and all this stuff, and she, you know, we had literally great conversations about that sharing culture, and the kids got to see her. I feel like it's really wonderful in a school district like ours, which honestly is fairly homogenous, to be exposed to these different kinds of diverse cultures and diverse people. If you've never come to Madagascar Day, and you have no idea what tech I'm talking about, I'm just going to take you through it quickly, and you're really missing out, you should really come next year, if you have the chance. I was going to highlight my favorite activities, and I just want to say while I'm doing this, this is not all me, most of this is coming from them. They are the ones who range, I range, like, the financial stuff, a lot of the times, and some like the administrative stuff, but these three really do a lot of the work in terms of feet on the ground and getting the connections with these groups. So I'm just going to say like my favorite stuff, which, one of my favorite, the sixth grade does the Madagasque lunch, which is really great, and they also get to play with the leaders of Two by Two, too. But for me personally, my favorite thing is, I have students that take to Madagascar in a separate program, and I get to see them deliver a keynote speech, which sounds maybe boring, I don't know, but it is really incredible to see, I call them my girls, because they're all girls this year, but they got up, and the stuff they were talking about was really important, both in Madagascar here and like globally, and they brought it to a level where the sixth graders could really latch on to it and understand it, and they would ask some questions. And for a teacher, and a parent, and somebody who's worked with these girls for two years on this, it was really special for me to see that connection that they were making. So that was my favorite thing this year with the sixth grade. Seventh grade, of course, we do a lot of different artistic things, so, I thought I had something. So we do like puppet show, we do paper making, but my favorite thing, of course, is Zara Aina, the kids work with Zara Aina. We talk to them about this idea of Ubuntu, which is I am because we are, it's this idea that we are a community first, and we are who we are because of the people around us, and it's kind of interesting to talk to new schoolers about. That's my favorite thing, because they're working with Zara Aina staff, they're working with some of my high schoolers that went to Madagascar, they're working with our staff members, they're being goofy. This year, they talked about climate change, and they brought that into a narrative, they wrote these narratives themselves, and they acted them out, which is really pretty awesome to see, was very exciting. And, you know, Ms. Dannan was being silly, and like, everybody was like having a great time together. And as a seventh grade teacher, that was really important. It's a really huge turning point in my class for them to go through that together, because it takes a lot of bravery to get up in front of people and perform that way, especially your peers, especially when you're, like, 12 years old. So it changed the dynamic of the class after that, which is really, really cool thing to see. Eighth graders do some of my favorite stuff. They used to go in Baptist home and work with the residents there. They go out with these schools, they play with these stuff, these kids like, they meet Torini's World, which is like all about, you know, we'll say like, we look at ourselves in a photograph, do you have any photographs? And it's kind of like the differences and similarities in cultures, which is really, really cool. Usually, I would say that this is my favorite thing that they do, because the preschoolers are really cute, and it's kind of a special connection. But this year, for me, my favorite thing to see was the Madagasque dance, and I'm going to talk about why that is in just a second. You may know that I developed a program at Culture Connect, where it takes students over to Madagascar as well. My first year there was about three and a half years ago, and while I was there, my wife decided, well, we had decided it's together, she can just do this, that we were going to adopt a child from Madagascar. going to adopt a child from Madagascar. And so, my children clearly know about this, and her name is Siori, and we got her, I don't have her pictures, but I will show you if you ever want to see. And so that's been like a journey that I've gone on personally. And so, when, my son's in 2nd grade, so that's who the 8th graders teach the dance. And so at the end of the presentation, Olivia Vanover had the kids sit, and she said, like, how does dance make you feel? And the kids were, they're very candid, they're adorable. Oh, my legs, I feel tired, I feel sweaty, you know, I feel excited, I feel happy. And by some reason, it's handed me, said, I feel closer to my sister, which was the, probably one of the most heartfelt things I've ever had my child say in public before. It was really phenomenal for me, and I shared that with our staff, too, because Madagascar Day clearly is very personal for me. It began for me, Madagascar Day, as a thing I thought would be cool, because I think, and it still I think is cool. And it's become something that's very deeply personal for me. Our district, my middle school staff, has supported this initiative for six years, and they continue to support it. And by extension, we are supporting it with your, you know, you allowing us to have curriculum time, you allowing us to take a half day, which we kind of dictate the round and tell it what day we want, and that's a pretty cool power to have, the superhero hour, right, which there we get a half day off. So I hope that you share the meaning of the day with us, and I hope that next year, if you have time, if you haven't, go on to see Madagascar Day, let me know, and I'm happy to drive you around the town and show you all the different things that we do. There's other stuff here, too. Do I take questions now?
I want to see what you have.
So this, we used to, we have a 3D printer, too. We used to have, last year, we hung these around the town, they've got QR codes on them, and again, all Kristen, I did not have anything to do with this, I don't think this was my idea or anything like this, Kristen had designed it. And they, so we reprinted levers, and they would put them in the shops around town, and have like little scaffolding, you get like a gift card, right, to like someplace? All kinds of places. So that was last year. This year, they replaced, Kristen replaced that with a visit to 1st grade classes, learning about deforestation, and the kids went home with a little tree from the Iberia Foundation that we found, and the plant at home, which is really kind of cool. So a different kind of community outreach, but just, you know, I think that's just important. This we did a long, long time ago, we had like this whole tree, and we learned about biodiversitying, the kids did paintings and canvas and things like that, paint a white in this one, I don't know what this one, I don't know what name on that one, but I have these hanging out, and also, and this year was, this is preschool's Christmas, well, the preschools just made this, it was very cute. I was like, well, can I have, then I could like show that's like physically tangible for them. I have a bunch of Malagasy stuff in my house, like drums and stuff, but I think this is better, because it's what our kids create or use on the day. So, I have lots and lots of stuff.
I can't thank you enough for coming tonight and sharing this with us, and sharing your passion for the school, with our kids, and I love how it's just taken over the community and everyone, and everyone that goes through the school gets to learn this, and I can't thank you enough for everything all of you have done for this to our school. Thanks for being here in the evening.
Sure. Culture Connect meeting on this hour, so.
Thank you.
Going to move on to board committee reports, communications.
That's me. So at our communications committee, Steve reviewed a document, it was called the comprehensive communications plan, which was drafted back in 2014 as a potential communications goal outline for our district. We discussed goals that we are achieving, such as social media, school messenger, website, improved internal communications, goals that are still in progress, and strategies that are in place or need doing. Steve and Joe will edit the document for the committee to review. One of the strategies is keeping track of our alums and keeping data on our postgraduate population. Naviante is helpful, but Jaclyn did raise a question of giving a permanent email address for our alums. We also discussed cybersecurity incident plan. Steve attended a workshop regarding cybersecurity, cybersecurity insurance, and the importance of knowing your inventory and what to do if attacked. Our district has a cybersecurity plan, which involves a chain of notification, and was successfully tested this summer, but we must always be prepared for another incident and must be diligent in maintaining an up-to-date inventory of our software, because 80% of cyber events are human error. We discussed our website, we're sort of giving input, and Steve is making changes, and he went over, he rearranged where you can find board policies, and added, join us on Twitter. Our next meeting is November 14th.
Questions for communications?
I've got two. The cybersecurity incident plan, what was the reason that was discussed in communications? Is it meant to be sent out to the public that we have one? Like, I don't, what was the rationale behind it being there?
Um, I think it was because Steve was there, we were talking about...
Steve's still here?
And we, and we were, why were we doing this?
Really, the purpose was to let the communications committee know that we will, we do have a communication plan that we're developing, so should an incident happen, it's not public, I admire that, it's the opposite, it needs to be confidential, but so that everybody knows what their role is going to be in such a time when that occurs, so that's really what that is. And so I just felt that it was important that the communications committee know that there is a plan in place to do internal communications and proper steps within the order which we do.
Yeah, we're doing it.
Cool.
We're working it out.
Excellent, thanks. And then the second one is, I brought up a while ago about recognizing individual donors and our organizations. Has any kind of thought been put into that calendar?
No.
Can we do that at the next?
Yes. So recognizing individual donors?
Yeah, Whitney sent out a list of the donors and organizations that have donated last year.
Oh, yeah. So I have a question. So this comprehensive communication plan, so this is just basically how we're going to like send stuff out, is it like, it's going to go through Twitter first?
Well, Steve is still in the room, but it was something they went through in 2014.
It was like a guide, yeah. It was a guide, so it just provided a framework for how they manage, and they, and what we were able to do is you could see what we've done, and what still needs to be do, to do, what's been outdated since it was from 2014, but it provides us with a plan and a guide.
A plan and a guide like for, like online things, right?
I think it's not that granular, it's more general in terms of, for example, 2014,
when you put that together, one of the goals was to, to do more with social media. Well, I mean, over the last five years, we've done quite a bit on that, so that, that goes into the checkbox, yeah, done that, and we're not stopping doing that, but that's a goal that we've reached. There are other goals on there that we need to do more on.
So it's more general, like how are we communicating with our public, how are we...
Yes, that's, that's right.
Anybody else? All right. Long way planning?
And you should have something at your places on that?
Yes. So this was a joint minutes with Steve. So we reviewed the reports from the administrators' one and a half day facilitated retreat in August, and got updates on their subsequent meetings. Before the summer, this committee asked Joe for a highly detailed picture of a possible scenario in which the district reorganizes the buildings to be K6 and 712. Although everyone is mindful about what might be lost in such a reorganization, the committee would like to focus on what could be gained and what could be preserved, as we face the reality of substantially declining enrollment and ongoing tax cap limitations on our budget. The full board is expecting a presentation by December with enough district-specific information for the board to consider this option. This should include details about staffing, classrooms, advisors, clubs, daily schedules, athletics, music, and other factors. The committee discussed this as an opportunity to come up with a new way to provide for our students and plan for the future, rather than waiting until smaller class sizes reach the upper grades and rushing solutions in crisis mode. The committee also discussed the possibility of hiring a consultant to develop a detailed restructuring plan for the board's consideration. Our next meeting is tomorrow.
Questions for Long Way Planning?
No.
Oh, sorry. Okay, personnel?
We met on November 5th, we discussed the items. So right now, we have some difficulty finding certified 72 teachers, it's a county-wide issue, and the district will be evaluating the fiscal impact of a salary increase, and be, and we're going to consider this increase, we're going to try to stay competitive with some of the other area school districts. We also discussed the district looking into the possibility of accessing online opportunities for some students through BOSI's, and we also took a look at the Duchess County contract analysis in preparation for the upcoming RTA negotiations.
Questions for personnel? Okay, finance?
So Tom discussed two veterans exemptions from real property taxation, the alternative veterans exemption and the Cold War veterans exemption, provided some historical background on those two exemptions. This is in connection with several inquiries from certain taxpayers about the status of their alternative veterans exemption. Tom had met with the assessor's office about why certain taxpayers are no longer able to rely on the alternative veterans exemption, and noted that he is scheduled to meet with the assessor's office to discuss the availability of the Cold War exemption and the anticipated tax impact of that exemption. Tom then noted that the audit report is, the process being finalized, and had an in-depth discussion on the various categories of budget review. He then discussed the 2019 School Budget Management Workshop, which was held last week in Saratoga Springs, from November 5th to November 8th, and he noted that it has been a very valuable conference in the past. Tom included by providing a draft copy of the 2020-21 Budget Development Calendar and discussed various deadlines in connection with that calendar. Next meeting of the finance committee is September, December 5th.
Any questions for finance? So, another question, so I had actually spoken some of that issue, so what was the problem that reasons why they were getting booted out of, is it one issue that they were all kind of getting booted out of their exemptions, or is this kind of individual to each of the people seeing some of the adjustments in here?
What happened approximately about 20 years ago, there was a flood in the town offices, and various exemption sheets or exemptions that were...
Documents.
Documents and that were in the flood itself, and they were, at this point, completely destroyed. So the new tax assessor, I don't know how new he is, actually, I think he's been here a few years, but the state comptroller's office was going around to, as they go around to schools, they go around towns and that, and municipalities, and one of the things that they were looking for were specifically was the veterans' alternative exemption, and having the paperwork and everything. So he basically had everybody resubmit all their paperwork, and when a lot of people resubmitted, he realized these people weren't eligible. They're not eligible because they weren't actually veterans, they served in the Cold War period, they didn't serve during war periods. So a lot of them got exemptions they should have never received to begin with. But as I was talking to him, he did explain to me that where it fills in the gap is what's called a Cold War exemption. I'll be meeting with him tomorrow to go over those details. And that would be for veterans who were not, I don't want to say deployed, because deployed is not the right word, that they were servicemen during a period of wartime, like during the Vietnam War, during the Gulf Wars I and II. I mean, those are very specific, you didn't actually have to be there to get a veteran's exemption, as long as you were a military person during that time. Previous assessors erroneously gave some exemptions that should have never been given in the first place. So I'll be meeting with him tomorrow to go over what the Cold War is, what potential impact that may have on us if we so decide to approve.
Is that not something we've approved at this point?
No, no, it's actually fairly recent.
So that would basically cover, and it's not providing the other exemptions?
So in other words, if you weren't, you don't qualify the alternative veterans exemption, then you wouldn't be eligible for the Cold War exemption. It's definitely at a lesser rate, it's nowhere near the other rates for veterans, it's way less than that.
And so the, so anyone that didn't have, the paperwork was destroyed and they couldn't find it, what happened with those people, that they just had luck now, or?
I didn't hear of anybody not having, submitting them, and then determining if they worked for it.
Okay. And we don't determine this out just for, we don't determine eligibility?
No, 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 town does, town does, yeah.
Okay, so that could be something potentially coming our way?
Correct, yeah. Like I said, I will talk with them tomorrow, and at our next finance meeting, I'll discuss with them the details I found out, what the impact is.
And it's not retroactive, you know, the, it would be for next year, you're voting on it this year?
Right. But also recall that even with the veterans exemptions that the Board of Education adopted, I'm not sure how many years ago, five, six, seven, I don't know, seems longer than that to me, but anyway, basically, that spreads those exemptions amongst all of the non-exempt, non-exempt taxpayers. It's not that the school district loses any tax revenue as a result of any of these exemptions, but they're shared by other, other taxpayers who don't have these exemptions.
Okay. Any other questions for finance? Moving on to the 2019 Miss Book Conference Convention Report, so without our chaperone, we did just fine. We had a good time, I think we all learned a lot in the conference. So this is on here, so that anyone that went could share with you any of the sessions they went to. We don't have to go through them all, they're, you know, it's two and a half days of sessions, so we could spread it out over a couple of meetings, so that we're not here all night talking about them, but anyone want to go first and share one of their sessions?
I would share one that Liz and I went to called Design from the Inside Out. It was from Queensberry High School, they don't have any desks anymore, they only have configurable furniture, and everybody has a Chromebook. And one of the quotes that they gave was, so when the high school was built, it was built for different instructional purposes, students were in rows, and teachers lectured the students, and students listened. It's based on early 1960 model of education, to contrast that with the Repose Capital Project, where there's no central point of instruction, learning takes place everywhere. That's how we integrated social skills into the academic setting, which I thought was really interesting. Not that far away from us, so it is, is a local school, and it's a much bigger school. I think this project was 31 million, something like that. But it was really interesting, I just tried to go online, too, to see if they had some pictures of some of their, you know, movable furniture and stuff, and it just seemed really, you know, groups of kids learning and thinking and, you know, in the hallways and on beanbags and libraries, and it's just a very different setting than what you would think about for education, I thought that was kind of, kind of neat.
Yeah, so I thought the conference is very worthwhile, I went to a session on mental health, went to a couple other ones, I actually presided over one, which was about diversity, which was, the presenter was a sixth generation descendant of Thomas Jefferson, one of his slaves, and his whole topic was about how you don't really know what, anything about somebody just by looking at them, so we kind of went through his life story and talked about that. I also was the delegate at the business meeting, I think all of the votes went pretty much how we had discussed, you know, earlier on. The two... all of the votes went pretty much how we had discussed, you know, earlier on. The two resolutions presented by Webatuk did pass. There was some discussion on those, but they did ultimately pass.
Wasn't one of those about the bus driver, the loading age?
No, they were about training.
Oh, okay. They did pass?
Yeah. Yeah, they did. And the bus driver one did, basically, everyone thought that leaving it at 21 was appropriate. So even though there was some discussion, I think most of the discussion centered on, let's leave it at 21. So that's the driving age for commercial drivers that drive school buses. So I had intentions of pulling the slides from this presentation I went to, and I just haven't gotten to it. But I will make it a point to have it done by the next, our next meeting.
Smart. Well, I would like to share the session I went to on a subject that I'm doing in my heart. It was a new look at homework. New Michelle was very excited. It was their high school principal and high school English teacher. And so they took, undertook a three-year timeline to look at the way they look at homework. For all the positives and negatives and everybody looks at it, the good, the bad, and they wanted to make a change. They formed committees of people, you know, for it, against it. You know, they said it wasn't always easy. The English teacher said there were people in his department that wouldn't talk to him for long periods of time. You know, it wasn't easy to look at it. But they really wanted to, you know, make a change. They, they were, ultimately, they changed their policy. And they, my notes. In the end, in their policy, they ended up, some of the changes that they made, it, it wasn't ultimately to, you know, get rid of all homework. You know, it was to look at what kind of homework are we assigning? How much homework are we assigning? You know, what kind of feedback are we giving? How quickly are we getting feedback? You know, how much does it count of the grading? You know, they changed things. You know, they looked at the quality, you know, getting kids interested in homework. The workload, they ultimately changed. So no homework can be more, count more than between 0 and 5% of the grade overall. They don't assign homeworks anymore on weekends, breaks, holidays, summers. There's no penalties for, you know, you can't assign homework to like get something signed or anything that would cause problems that way. The, one of the hardest things they got rid of were reading logs in elementary school. And they wanted to, he described it, reading logs as the depth of reading. So they still want to encourage reading, but they didn't want, they wanted to get rid of reading logs, which was a difficult thing, but they did that in the end. So it was just a collaboration with the teachers and learning, you know, what, what homework was valuable and making those changes. And, you know, listening to everybody. Everybody has very strong opinions on homework. You know, we, we talked about it here a couple of years ago. I think when I was on curriculum, we talked about homework and the same questions. Everybody has strong opinions and has different feelings on how much homework or what kind of homework. And, you know, there's a lot of stress around that for kids, for parents, for teachers, for everybody. So I, I know that curriculum is going to be talking about homework in the context of, you know, trying to not assign it all at the same time. But, you know, I think taking a more global look at it maybe would be nice. This, you can take this presentation they have and what they looked at. You know, I know that there's many of our teachers that have already changed the way that they approach homework. We have a lot of math teachers that don't assign 20 problems a night. They assign five problems a night, three problems a night. We have some teachers that don't assign any homework, whether they're honors classes or regular. So we already have, you know, a lot of staff members looking at this and already implementing some of these things. You know, it would be nice to, to look at it more. It's still a big topic. It's a big part of everybody's life, whether you're a parent or everybody goes, goes through these things. So it'd be nice if communication might want to take this up. If the information is here, if you want to take a look at kind of what they did.
Communication for a second.
Sorry.
I was going to say.
Break them. And the changes they ended up, sorry, communication. Changes they ended up making to their policies. But like I said, it took them three years to go through and to listen in groups. And they did a whole, whole host of things. And it wasn't an easy process. And, you know, like I said, they didn't, they changed name of it. They don't call it homework anymore. They didn't ban it. There is, you know, but it is a lot different. And they felt like it was, you know, this is the first year they're implementing it. But they felt like they kind of captured, you know, what everybody felt strongly about.
And you said New Rochelle?
North Rock.
North Rock.
North Rock. So it's very interesting. So if you have any other sessions, you know, the next time we can talk more about...
Okay. I mean, I just went, mine is really quick. I went to the one with Steve, which was awesome, of rethinking classrooms and, and the buildings themselves. I went to one in crisis communication, monitoring and securing your social media. And we seem to be riding the curve, I think, as far as the information they were giving and talking about. We've already kind of been talking about and discussing here, you know, the importance of quick response, of getting ahead of the, of any kind of rumors that are trickling around out there. It's also important owning your identity online. They talked about this kind of funny, not funny story of a school that didn't own their school district's name. And so when you Google it, it would become on the side, you know, and it would become any current picture of what's going on. One of their teachers got arrested. So when you Googled the school's name, it was this gigantic picture of the teacher's mugshot. So, you know, so they just talked about how it's important to own your, own your business. They also talked about TweetDeck. I don't know, Steve's left the building, about how you can see anything or anybody. You put in these finding search, you know, search words. And then if it's mentioned in a tweet, it comes up and it's got the whole, the different days of, of what's going on. So I went to that. And I went to a policy meeting too. I brought up some of our policy issues. And they said, you know, they, they had no further input for our, what's going on in our policies. So, yeah, it was really informative. It was very exciting. Lots of people there, lots of conversations. And the vendor floor was interesting. We resisted buying the EV bus system for our school with a credit card. But yeah, it was good.
Darn good.
We didn't sign up for anything.
We didn't sign up for anything. We said, we're not allowed to.
So you guys didn't need to share, right?
We didn't.
We didn't.
Would you, when we meet next as a communications committee, would you share?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That one, you know, the, for that one workshop on social meetings?
Yeah.
That's important for us all to know and for maybe Steve to weigh in.
Okay.
All right. Moving on to good news. Have any good news?
Girls volleyball did really well. They didn't win.
This is postseason play, right?
Yeah, what's it, sectionals? Yeah, yeah. They did, they gave it a valiant effort.
Our boys soccer team is going to be competing in the state championship this weekend.
Very exciting.
Saturday and hopefully Sunday. That's exciting. I know one, some of our swimmers did...
Yeah, I would say there's two. Rowan Van Warmer made top five in two events as an athlete, which is just phenomenal. And Brooke Pochesk qualified in two events for states.
Great job with our athletes. I know we had a beautiful Veterans Day assembly this past week. They always do an excellent job. And since we were here last, obviously Madagascar Day, which we just heard about, another great success. Any other good news?
We did have Lynn Lyons, who gave a parent presentation on Thursday evening with, with our staff all day Friday. And that was something that we had talked about during the summer. We were putting together board goals about having some training for the entire staff. So I'm checking that checkbox off too, because it was a great day. And she, she really was a phenomenal presenter. And I think made, made all the difference in terms of the attention that, that our staff had the night before our parents gave to that presentation. I'm not sure if any of you were there the evening before, but it was really, really very well worthwhile. So that's good news, I think, especially within the context of our social emotional well. So...
I'd like to say just one thing, but, because I heard you, you missed the Thursday meeting.
I did.
I missed it too, because I had, you know, kid stuff going on. And I knew, and I heard it wasn't recorded.
It's not allowed to be recorded.
It's not allowed. I mean, it's just frustrating. And I wish that we had some kind of a private channel of just for our school, you know, because it's, you know, oftentimes they're very, very, it sounds like very effective talks. And unfortunately, you know, it's, we just miss them. So, you know, I'm just putting it out there.
Well, I'll only say she is not the first speaker to come in who makes their living out of speaking.
Yeah.
Who doesn't want you to record, record them. I mean, it's, it's in their agreement. And that's, I guess we have to respect that too. I understand your, your concern there. And it would be nice if they would allow us to. But it was not for lack of our asking if we could.
Well, thanks for asking.
We declined, yeah.
Okay.
Joe, can you just describe the other times that she's coming into the district? Is that for faculty only?
That was Friday.
But I thought she was doing for, am I wrong, that she wasn't coming back four times? Or?
I'm not sure about that. She did a session Thursday afternoon with, or Personnel Services staff. Then she did the, the parent presentation Thursday night. Then she did three sessions during the day on, during the day on Friday. And there were three, two in the morning and one in the afternoon. I'm not aware of...
Yeah, I thought it was spaced out throughout the year. But I'm sorry.
There are three more? Oh, great.
And so that's only for faculty though? So people like, I couldn't go either because I was at sectionals.
I don't leave downing with the PGS staff.
Yeah.
Thanks, buddy.
Is there any feedback on how the staff ones were?
I have, I've been out of town. So my, I was up at a conference, so I wasn't able to attend. But I got back before the end of the day and talked to them. And my business office, she was engaging. And really, they themselves understood what she was trying to get at. And my office staffs found it very engaging. And she was engaging.
Good.
Okay. Old business?
I don't have any.
You don't have any either. We have another opportunity for public comment. Other? I have two others. So the first one, tonight, as you know, on our agenda, we will be accepting Joe's resignation for the purpose of retirement. But just, I know, I know you're not running out the door today, but I just wanted to just say a few words. I just wanted to thank you on behalf of the district for everything that you've done for our school, for our kids. Most of the superintendents, I think the average is five, five years, maybe five and a half. And we've been lucky enough to have you with us for 21 and a half years. And I just wanted to say thank you for, for everything you've done. It's not an easy job, a lot of time, a lot of stress. And we appreciate it.
You're welcome. It's been a great place to, to have.
All right. That leads me to the second, the second other that I have. I just wanted to say, as we move forward, having to have someone with us for the end of the year and hire someone to move forward, you know, I just wanted to let the community know that when we have information, you know, it'll be on the agenda, that we'll be updating the community on the process. The board, it's our priority to, to take care of this. And we'll be working on that. We're currently working on that. And we'll be letting everybody know when we have information as we move forward. Joe is going to be putting it on the agenda so that it'll always be there. So if there's updates, you know, we'll just make sure that everybody's constantly informed about this important process that we're going to be going through. All right. Move on to action items. Does anyone want to move any, remove anything from the consent agenda? Upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the following consent items.
So moved?
Second.
All those in favor? That motion passes. On motion to accept the resignation of Joseph L. Fallon, superintendent of schools for the purpose of retirement, as stated effective the close of business on January 31st, 2020.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? That motion passes. Motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to adopt the budget development calendar and timelines for the 2020-2021 budget.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? That motion passes. Motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the revised high school health curriculum.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? I just want to thank David Arisak for all the work on that. Looks, looks really good. All those in favor? That motion passes. Motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve as a final reading and adoption of board policy 5690, student voter registration.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? That motion passes. And motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the appointment of Allison Burton and Sandy Goodman as part-time special education teacher, assigned, education teachers, assigned, I put it on my other notes, not this one. Assigned to provide special education homebound instruction on an hourly per day basis as required by the student's IEP at the pleasure of the Board of Education with effective date of November 13th, 2019, at the rate of $60 per hour for the 2019-20 RTA contract.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? That motion passes. And motion to move into exact discussion for the purpose...
We have, we have at least one item relevant to a discussion of particular persons.
Or the discussion of a particular person.
So moved?
Second.
All those in favor? Okay. Two exact discussions.